Please, what is our next item for public hearings, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Our first public item is the first and only public hearing to consider the revised Sixth Amendment to the Southwood Development of Regional Impact Development Order. Mr. Chairman, we have seven or so, let me see. We've got about 12 speakers on the phone with us virtually. We've got, but let me just introduce this item a little bit more thoroughly. This item requests the Board to conduct, again, the first and only public hearing to consider the Sixth Amendment of the Southwood Integrated Development Order to designate .47 acres of a portion of the golf course currently designated as Recreation Golf Course/Clubhouse to residential single-family to allow for the construction of one detached single-family residential unit. Amendments to the Southwood Development Regional Impact Integrated Development Order require approval by both the County and City Commissions. Commissioners, we're happy to answer any questions you might have on this. Again, we've got several speakers on the phone and we've got one speaker with us here in the chambers, Mr. Chairman. So what is your, what's your preference, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Let's go ahead and listen to the first speaker, please.
Okay. First speaker, David Hutchinson.
Mr. Hutchinson, please state your name and address the record, please.
Evening Commissioners, David Hutchinson, 3217 Rosa Court. Appreciate being here before you tonight. We represent the property owner and the property owner is wanting to subdivide one portion of a lot, I mean, a lot out of a portion of the golf course property. It's located on a street corner. All the public utilities are available, all the infrastructure's in place. Simply a matter of recording a plat and following through with some other instruments that the staff has recommended that we do such as a conservation easement that was, should have been done by the original developer years ago. It wasn't, so the owner has agreed to do this. Okay, thank you. So anyway, that's what we're here for. Wanted to put this before you guys and look forward to any other questions you may have. I don't have anything particular to say. I know there'll be lots of people coming here telling you that we've proposed to do multiple lots all over the place. It's just simply not true. We did inquire with staff about the possibilities of other areas, but once we looked at those, it just nothing made sense. This is an area that is perfectly suited to put another house very similar to the houses around it. So that's all we're trying to do. One lot, one house, and on an existing street corner. Not trying to develop other areas. There's just nothing else available that makes sense economically to try to develop. So that's why we're here. Would appreciate your favorable review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Carolyn Bibler. She will be joining us by phone. If I could, Commissioners, let me just, for those calling in, let me just quickly add a reminder that, Commissioners, prior to the meeting, all registrants for the virtual public comments have received instructions on how to participate, but I'll quickly do a refresher for those tuning in. So as a reminder to callers, you'll be identified by your name and when asked to provide a, and you'll be asked to comment for up to three minutes. For those joining by video, you may experience a few-second transition as we bring you into the meeting. When you're asked to speak, you'll be added to the meeting and you'll be prompted to unmute your device. And if you choose to, to activate your video at that time, again, you'll receive an automated prompt to unmute your device. Once prompted, please state your name and address for the record. And again, keep your comments pleased to three minutes or less. If you experience technical difficulties during your call, bear with us. If unresolved, we'll move on to the next speaker. And thank you. And with that, again, I'd like to call on the first speaker, Carolyn Bibler.
Good evening Commissioners and Staff. This is Carolyn Bibler. I live at 3673 Mossy Creek Lane in Southwood. I work for half associate representing the applicant. In April of this year, I began work on this project, the creation of a .47 acre residential lot on a street corner. The street corner owned by the Southwood Golf Course is not within the playable area and has been maintained with short grass under story with a few large oaks. No mid-story exists. The area is currently zoned Parks and Recreation with a tiny sliver of low-density residential. I'll get back to that in a minute. Golf Course had a willing purchaser for this corner lot on an unused portion of their land and the prospective purchaser, our applicant, was willing to hire an engineer and pay city and county fees and noticing charges in order to do what was necessary to make this a legal, properly-zoned lot on which to build one house. In order to create this lot, a new half-acre zoning category, LDR-17, was necessary. The PUD tables that are the accounting system for Southwood must be updated to reflect the change in the balance of land uses. Unfortunately, as I reviewed the PUD documents, I quickly realized that something was wrong. Though I knew the exact acreage of the golf course from the plat, nothing seemed to add up. What I thought was going to be a simple change of .5 acre from PR to LDR led to the realization that several land use changes had been made over the years without documentation, leaving the golf course property with several zonings, including 8.6 acres of residential. This application seeks to claim one half acre of that 8.6 acres of residential zoning in order to build one single-family home. The rest will be dedicated to open space and parks and recs. This project has been approved by two DRCs and by the Planning Commission after two meetings. It has been recommended for approval by staff. Please don't let a misinformation campaign tied to a petition sway your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bibler. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next speaker is John Ray.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can, Mr. Ray.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Thank you for your service and thank you for this opportunity to join virtually. My name is John Ray. I reside at 3639 Mossy Creek Lane. I have been a resident of Southwood for 15 years. I serve on the Capital Region Community Development District for the last eight years. That's the Southwoods DED. That's our unit of local government. I am designated liaison on land use and zoning issues for the district. Before you tonight is an amendment to Southwood's DRI Development Order to create one new subdivision on golf course property that is currently zoned Parks and Recreation to accommodate one new house. Why such an amendment that glaringly violates our master plan is before this audio this evening will forever be a mystery to me. But nonetheless, here we are. I and hundreds of my fellow residents oppose this application for two main reasons. One, it violates our master plan that we were promised. This application is clearly not consistent with our DRI Development Order and our PUD. Quite simply, homes were never intended to be built on this land. Secondly, the approval of this DRI PUD amendment will set a dangerous precedent for our community. If one house is approved, we are convinced more will follow. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there is strong and diverse opposition to this application in Southwood. In your agenda packets, there is a neighborhood petition signed by 508 residents of Southwood voicing their unconditional opposition to this amendment. Also in your packet is a letter from our five-member resident-led DED Board expressing our wish that this application be denied unconditionally. Adly, as we just heard the consultant say, they have consistently claimed that the CDD Board's opposition and the opposition of the residents is misguided and ill-begotten because in their opinion, it is based upon misinformation and false claims. Primarily our claim and conclusion that the applicant has acted in the past and still desires to develop multiple home sites on golf course property. The applicant, as late as, late October, recently sent an open letter to the residents of Southwood restating his intent that he only wants to develop one lot and has only conducted due diligence for one lot. And I quote from the letter, "Based on the false claim, hundreds of people have signed a petition opposing my project." On the same day that open letter was published, we acquired an email from over a year ago from the applicant's consultant sent to city staff stating, and I quote, "We are looking into the possibility of creating a few residential lots by cutting some land out of the golf course, probably only six to eight max." We also confirmed that the applicant hired a different consulting firm in early 2019 to do diligence on the feasibility of creating multiple home sites. The applicant's long-term intent to develop multiple home sites is very clear to us.
Mr. Ray, that's time.
I would submit to you that the applicant has a lack of acquaintance with the facts and the truth, not residents of Southwood. We recommend strong denial of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next speaker is Jim Thielen.
Hi, this is Jim Thielen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, guys. Thanks for your service. I appreciate these long days you're going through, especially having to wear that confounded mask. My name is Jim Thielen. I live, I used to reside at 3686 Mossy Creek for 16 years with my bride and boys, and we bought on Dunbar at 3150. I also own two buildings out here. I've built two buildings out here. I'm part of the original group of folks who invested in Southwood primarily based on St. Joe's strong balance sheet and its promise of a master plan community. The bottom line is, I'm still kind of, I'm kind of like Mr. Ray. I've donated six or seven hours of my life to this, and I can't figure out why I'm having to. The gentleman was very clear in his intent originally. They wanted to carve up the lots and the golf course to return the original capital. FYI, based on what I know to be true, they paid almost the same amount of money for this entire golf course as I did for my house on Mossy Creek. I have, and my bride and I have our life savings between the buildings and the house. We have our kids here. We're invested in the community. We participate with this clubhouse extensively, $500 to $900 a month. We have always participated. We have always supported, but I'm not going to support stupid. This is clear. And the real issue, the scariest issue, is as we heard with that one email, people retire at the county. People retire at the zoning department. The legacy data that you're going to leave with this, if you pass this, is going to mean there's a slippery slope. They can carve up six to 10, get their million dollars back, and brieffold and sell to a new developer. It's not righteous, and Commissioner Maddox knows me pretty well. This will not happen. Not on our watch. You have over 500 signatures, 500, from all streets throughout the community. 500. And as Ms. Bibler said, the paid consultant who lives on Mossy, it got through other stages. It got through other stages inappropriately. One of your attorneys at some level, when I sat here for three and a half hours one night, said you're only allowed to look at the four corners of the application. Well, if I was a CPA working for you, would you only want me to look at four corners of any tax form? Or would you want me to work for you in your interest and your business interest? Again, this dog doesn't hunt. It doesn't make sense. You're setting a scary, scary precedent which puts me and my bride and our boys at risk. My family, my brothers that live on the golf course. It can't happen, folks. I appreciate your service and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thielen. Next speaker, Mr. County Administrator.
The next speaker is David Weiss. Calling again, David Weiss.
Apologize. I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I did not hear, I did not hear that I was called. Good evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Administrator and County Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. David Weiss, 23 South Cal Newbury, on behalf of the Capital Region Community Development District. This is not about claiming an existing residential acreage. What it is, is that it's an amendment to the DRI to allow for additional residential acres. You have to decide whether to approve or deny the proposed amendment based on its consistency with the comprehensive plan and all applicable laws. Now, evaluating consistency of an amendment is a little bit different than evaluating an initial application in that the amendment has to be consistent not only with the general regulations in your Comp Plan and Land Development Code, but also must be internally consistent with the existing PUD and DRI. Now, we've reviewed the application and do not think the applicant has demonstrated consistency with the existing PUD and DRI. In particular, the proposed amendment is not consistent with the DRI requirements affecting the entire out-of-bound area of the golf course. Now, I want to talk for just a second about the PUD, and I know we're not considering an amendment to the PUD tonight, but it's important to consider for purposes of consistency. We submitted a letter that's included in your agenda package that identifies numerous sections of the PUD that show that the primary focus is on the amenity value of natural features and the protection and conservation of natural resources. Those sections show how the open space and Parks and Recreation zoning districts are complementary and utilized in connection with each other in order to provide interconnected corridors for green space and habitat protection. Now, against that backdrop and consistent with the focus of the PUD, the DRI includes a requirement to protect a minimum of 45 acres of the out-of-bound area of the golf course. Now, the applicant proposes to satisfy that condition by agreeing to, but not paying for, a conservation easement over just 45 acres. But the condition actually requires protection of the entire out-of-bound area. Now, I can understand when you focus on the number and read the condition in isolation, how you might think that the 45 acres could technically satisfy the condition. But when you read the condition in context, it seems pretty clear that the protection of the entire area is required. Now, you have to remember that the condition was included in the DRI that was approved prior to any development activity, and at that time, the exact acreage and location of the golf course were not known. So the condition required a minimum of 45 protected acres. But it doesn't limit the protected area to 45 acres. It requires protection of the entire area. Now, that interpretation is also supported by the map that's included with the application that identified 46.36 upland acres. It seems pretty unlikely that the condition was intended to require protection of just 45 of those and allow development on the remaining 1.36, particularly given the language of the PUD. Now, again, the CDD understands that master plans may change over time in order to accommodate changed market conditions, and that certain aspects of the master plan may be amended to those reasons.
Mr. Weiss, that concludes your time.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker.
The next speaker is Chuck Urban.
I'm sorry. Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Can I take my time and give it to the gentleman who was just speaking? Let him finish.
I'm sorry, sir, you cannot.
Okay. My name is Chuck Urban. I live at 3670 Mossy Creek Road, Mossy Creek Lane. And I do believe that anybody has a right to do whatever they want with their property. I'm a landowner, business owner here in Tallahassee, and have gone through condemnation and other titling issues with regards to land. But you have to be able to convince the powers to be the city, the county, or whoever it may be. And I believe that this spot zoning in this instance, that's a very dangerous precedent, and that's really how it's adversely going to affect hundreds, if not thousands, of residents here in Southwood for years to come. Because many of these people, their homes are their, it's a huge investment. It's the biggest investment they have, and that's their retirement. And I guess that's what I don't want to see happen to so many people that live here. You know, we're expanding as we speak. They're building separate subdivisions within Southwood, and there's literally thousands of people that live here. And I can see this down the road being a problem. It's really the precedent that this, that I guess where I have a problem with it. And, you know, we have a master plan. We all bought into the master plan. You know, and as the gentleman who's representing the applicant spoke about, it wasn't economically feasible for them to do, to build, even though they might want to. Doesn't mean that there isn't somebody down the road that they could sell to that will, that has the money to do that. And, you know, that's what we are, as a community, afraid of, that down the road, they'll sell the property to somebody that can redevelop this place and that has more money and more power than they do. And I love living here. We've lived here for almost 10 years now. And, you know, we just ask that you all say no to this application and protect us, protect our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker.
The next speaker is Corey Peterson.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Corey Peterson. I live at 2483 Goldenrod Way, located on the fifth hole of the Southwood Golf Club. We bought into this neighborhood specifically for the beautiful green spaces, recreational land, and various aspects of the master plan of Southwood. I, like 500 of my neighbors, have signed the Southwood petition opposing this application. This attempt at spot zoning by the applicant will create a dangerous precedent, as mentioned before, and impact property values for years to come within Southwood. There are currently two vacant lots available for sale on the golf course within a few hundred feet of this property. Should this amendment be approved, there will certainly be more efforts by the Southwood Golf Club owners to slice up additional recreational space in search of revenue. We have heard arguments by the applicant that selling and rezoning the land is vital to the sustainability of the golf club, specifically citing challenges during this pandemic. To the contrary, the National Station has said that rounds this year are up 8.7%. Additionally, summer months, 5% errors round. The golf is the biggest growth it has in decades. South extremely concerned that if this amendment shall pass, more houses are sure to follow. Through reassurances from the parties involved, we know the long-term plan is to continue to pursue development of park and recreation space. In closing, please honor and defend our master plan as it was originally envisioned. And I encourage you to vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker.
The next speaker is Kathy Jones. Mrs. Jones, we see you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much for your time. I'm not even going to try to pretend that I know all the ins and outs about planning and zoning and all that. What I can tell you is that our family has lived in Tallahassee for 16 years. During that time, we've only lived in Southwood. We've rented two townhouses and built two houses. Our current house is 3206 Dunbar Lane, a short distance from the post lot. Southwood is good with the master plan community. We pay an HOA fee as well as CDD taxes and adhere to rigid community standards for a reason, to live in a beautiful, family-oriented community. Our concern with this PUD amendment has nothing to do with the Southwood golf course. We fully support and have supported the golf course for 15 years. Our family has literally spent hundreds of hours on the course as well as dining in the clubhouse. Nor do we have a problem with someone wanting to build a house right down the street from us. There are numerous lots available. This is not about one lot. None of this makes sense. Nobody would go through all of this for just one lot. What this is about is adhering to standards. Drive-through colorm. They don't have any standards. We wouldn't want to live there. Summerbrook, not a whole lot better. Golden Angel doesn't even have sidewalks. Southwood is a special place. It's special for the green spaces that we have, the recreational amenities, all the trails. During the stay-at-home order, it was so nice to look outside and see kids riding bikes, families walking their own bike together. Southwood is special. We need to keep that way. We respectfully request that you vote no on this amendment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker.
The next speaker is Brett Ewing.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing the residents of Southwood to, for us to voice our opinions this evening and present some facts to you. It means a lot to us and all the residents of Southwood. My name is Brett Ewing. I own two residences out at Southwood, one on Four Oaks, 3773 Four Oaks, and 3635 Mossy Creek Lane. I've been a resident of Southwood for 18 years. I have raised three beautiful daughters here in this neighborhood, and I've been a charter member of the Southwood Golf Course and have golfed on it since day one. Taught my, all three of my girls how to play on the course. Love the neighborhood. I grew up here in Tallahassee, I'm a lifelong resident, second generation. I have, I moved out to Southwood specifically because it was a master plan community and that we, we understood. And that we understood that our green spaces were special and vital and that they would always be protected in this. And, you know, growing up here in Leon County, I can tell you, I've been attuned with, with issues and stuff going on with the city and county for many years. And I do know, one of the philosophies of Leon County is to expand recreational land, and it's certainly not the destruction of recreational land. You will hear some arguments from the applicant that this land is just the minimus. It's only .47 acres, and we promise we will only do this. Well, that's fine. As the previous speaker earlier said, they are not trying to develop any more acres, but perhaps they might not own it in the future. And like a previous speaker said, on a technical note, it may not because it's quasi jurisdiction amendment here, but it does set a precedent. So in real life, everything sets a precedent. And no matter who owns this course down the road, once they see that it can be chipped away, it will be presented in an argument in front of this commission at some point down the road. And it really puts the residents of Southwood in a very bad position. Because if a large developer does come in here and buy this golf, golf club, once they do this, the value of the golf club, in my opinion, based on evidence I'm looking at, has more than doubled. And if they come in there, they have the resources to fight, and the citizens here cannot stand up to a larger corporation. We ask you to stand with us this evening. We ask you to vote no. We ask you to send a strong message to all developers and protect the future of all master plan communities here in Tallahassee. Not just about Southwood. This is about the entire Leon County. It's about Tallahassee.
Mr. Ewing, that concludes your time.
Our residents. It's certainly about the residents of Southwood. Thank you for your consideration. Please vote no this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker. Mr. County Administrator, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Keith Bell, to be followed by the last speaker, Lisa Alcorn.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. My name is Keith Bell, and I reside at 2558 Twain Drive. My wife and I moved to Southwood about 10 years ago, and we desperately want to see the neighborhood keep the character that drew us here in the first place, which would be a character consistent with the master plan. And it's our opinion, for all the reasons that have been very eloquently expressed tonight, that this proposal is not consistent with the master plan. And in particular, I heard Mr. Weiss's very convincing legal argument in that regard and would reiterate and incorporate the same into my comments. You know, when I first moved here, most of the area around me on, here on Twain Drive, which is around the corner from the particular lot that we're here about tonight, was all wooded, and there were no houses. And we really enjoyed that aspect. We had deer in our backyard, we had deer on the golf course, and of course, over time, that was all developed into home sites. And we were, you know, upset about that, but that was something that we bought into because those areas were designated to be developed into home sites. And so while we saw all of the beautiful oak trees torn down and we saw all of the homes built, we accepted that as part of the master plan. What we do not accept as part of the master plan is to see areas on the golf course like this, which have been designated as green space, to be developed into further home sites. And that's all this is, is simply changing something that was not initially planned to be what it is now proposed to be. And as our elected officials, we rely on you to subject these requests to the proper scrutiny, and we would ask that you please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. County Administrator, our next speaker.
Final speaker, Lisa Alcorn.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, and staff for having us. My name is Lisa Alcorn, and I live at 3571 Mossy Creek Lane, where I've lived for about the last seven years with my husband. Something doesn't feel right about this. And that's a comment, well, obviously, all of us that are opposing it have said that. That was a comment that was made by the Planning Commission. We've met with them twice to discuss this. Something doesn't feel right about this. And that's exactly right, something doesn't feel right about this. This is a rhetorical question to you, but have you been actually to the site and seen this lot that we're discussing? I know somebody was there today because I walked by that lot twice today, and as I was walking back, somebody was there looking at it, so, you know, I don't know if it was any one of you Commissioners. But if you haven't been to it, let me explain what this lot is. So, this lot is, it's at the top of the hill here in Mossy Creek and, you know, and here in Tallahassee, you know, we don't have, well, they have more hills than a lot of places. But this lot is at the top of the hill, and when you come up to the top of this hill, this lot looks over the golf course. You can see down the fairway, and it's a very beautiful view. And people come to Southwood, they walk Southwood, and it's a view that's beautiful as you're walking down Mossy Creek to be able to look down the fairway. And that's what would be taking, taken away by building a house in this location. So this lot, like I said, it's the top of the fairway, it's got a lot of large trees, old oak trees, it's a very beautiful location. You know, was this a mistake originally in the master plan? I'd say no. I think that when the master plan was drawn up, that the people, the powers that be that drew this up, they saw too the beauty of this lot, and they intentionally didn't zone this for housing. It was a recreational area for all of Southwood residents and other people of Tallahassee to come and enjoy the beauty of our great neighborhood. So no, I don't think it was an oversight in their original plan. Also, you know, getting back to the why, you know, this doesn't feel right, there are other lots, and other speakers have mentioned this, there are, there's a lot across the street that's for sale. The golf course lot could be developed. There are plenty of lots along the golf course that could still be developed, so why this lot? Why this one in particular? Yes, I agree, when you're looking at the overall numbers, it doesn't add much to, you know...
Alcorn, that concludes your time. Thank you.
I'm voting, I'm asking you to vote no on this. Vote no, we are opposed to this, keep the beauty of Southwood.
Thank you, Ms. Alcorn. Thank you very much. Mr. County Administrator, I believe that's the last speaker, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you very much. To the board, sorry, Commissioner Maddox, I have Christian Dozier on the speaker's queue. Mr. Christian Dozier.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. First, because I'm guessing Commissioner Maddox is going to ask, I would appreciate waiving the rules and having a discussion before we get into a motion here, because this is a judicial hearing and we may have legal questions for counsel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Wells, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Maddox?
Oh, oh, sorry, we can move to the motion.
Pardon?
We can move to the motion.
Okay, all right. All's in favor of the motion signified by saying aye? Aye? All opposed?
Aye.
So the motion carries for three. Thank you, Mr. Dozier.
Okay, so this is a very interesting issue at a very interesting time. So I want to say first, I appreciate the hard work by citizens to get engaged on this issue, and I appreciate all the hard work by the applicant and their firms. I mean, this is a substantial item, and it's gone through the Planning Commission and others. I understand that any neighborhood could have a fear of other things happening in the future, but we have to reflect on what's in front of us today, and that's where I'm going to stay. So, we have heard a lot about other potential lots or emails in the past, but I'm going to focus on the item that's in front of us. Madam County Attorney, I'm not sure if you can answer this question, it might be more of a planning question, but I'm going to direct it to you or maybe the county administrator. One of the speakers mentioned what, I think he was referring to the Planning Commission and the DRC, what they can and can't or do and don't look at for consistency. I kind of, I missed some context there, maybe this is for county administrator. Do you understand what that question is, and can you give me a little bit of context of what he might have been speaking to?
Sure, I think the best person to go to now, we've got on standby, we've got Barry Wilcox, and if we can bring Barry up.
Haven't seen Barry in a minute.
Oh, better video.
Barry, are you on?
Yes, Vince, I'm on, I'm just trying to get...
There you go.
...video going. Oh, there we go, okay. Can you see me and hear me?
Commissioner Dozier had a question, I'll just ask Commissioner Dozier if you'd like to repeat the question.
Sure, thank you. Good to see you, Barry, from afar. One of the speakers mentioned or referred to things that the DRC or Planning Commission look at for consistency, and I think there was an implication that they're not looking at maybe the PUD or something else. Could you unpack that for me a little bit and tell me what the Planning Commission and the DRC are looking at for consistency?
Typically, they'll be looking at consistency with the comprehensive plan. In this case, did they look at the DRI too, Keith?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Internal consistency with the DRI.
And internal consistency with the DRI.
Other rules.
And any other rules and regulations that apply to it.
Would that include the PUD? The PUD?
That includes, the commission looked at it. It's not part of this.
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay. I appreciate that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, for getting in the weeds on that, but it was a comment that stood out to me, and I just wanted to make sure it was clear about what they're looking at and what they're not looking at. For my read of this, I can see in the staff reports and the Planning Commission, the DRC, that they find it consistent, and this is kind of why I was asking that question, because when we do a master plan, when we have a planned unit development, a PUD, and this was a DRI, Development of Regional Impact, that no longer exists, that designation that at the time Southwood went in, we had DRIs. That is a unique process, and we have just been through a similar process establishing a master plan and a comp plan amendment for a major land use change. When I look at something like that, I do believe that there should be overwhelming need or a reason to change that master plan. It is the guiding principles. And in looking at, I mean, I'll give you the attachment number here, the letter from Mr. Weiss at Ozzy McMullin, it's attachment eight. This goes through a number of issues with the Southwood PUD, with the comprehensive plan, and really highlights why preserving this open space around the golf course was such a high priority for the Southwood development. And yes, I recognize that this was, the plan was set before the lots were designated, but it still guided all of the future developments in Southwood. And I am really troubled by a change to that master plan for one lot. Now, we have taken up, this is the Sixth Amendment, we've seen amendments for schools and for new commercial area. In each of those times, it was a, actually, I think it might have been Mr. Weiss, it may have been someone else in their comments said that they're changing market conditions or there's an overwhelming need to change something like this, like school capacity at Florida High, something like that. Those made sense to me, but changing a master plan for one lot, I simply don't, I do feel like it's setting a precedent and a slippery slope. If we are going to be guided by these agreements that are made for the life of a development like, a neighborhood like Southwood, a future Waloney, a future whatever it might be, I think we need to stay true to that master plan unless there's an overwhelming reason to change. Now, I've talked to the county attorney about this in detail, and I do understand that we need, and forgive me, Madam Attorney, I'm going back to the exact language here in the item, in evidentiary, is that, okay.
Madam County...
Competent substantial evidence, that would be the phrase we're looking for. From my perspective, I understand staff's read on this, but I see there is substantial evidence of what the original intent of the PUD was, what the original intent of the DRI and the master plan was, and that is persuading me to deny this request.
Is there a motion?
Again, I would love to hear from the rest of the board, I would make a motion to that effect, but we did just waive those rules, so I would like...
I'll second that motion.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to deny the request. Thank you, sir.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier's been seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. Any other discussions? Commissioner Maddox, I did have you in the queue. All right. Any other discussion? Okay.
You know what, I'm sorry. Good question. The decision we make today impacts whether this goes to the city? It goes to the city anyway?
Madam County Attorney?
It would to the extent that they would not be able to amend the DRI.
So the city would still have to make a decision on this, or no?
I'm sorry?
Would the city commission still have to make a decision on this, or no?
It wouldn't be worth it, they wouldn't have our agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Okay, a motion has been made for option two, that would be, correct? Commissioner Dozier?
Yeah, Commissioner Maddox, I'm sorry. I think Commissioner Dozier said that in order for us to move option two, we will have to have evidence, correct, of, or some kind of evidence that we don't, that we see something substantially wrong with it? Correct?
Madam County Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Commissioner Maddox, the standard is if the applicant has met all procedural requirements and shown that the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which Planning Staff has determined it is consistent, then any denial would have to include a determination that maintaining the existing conditions furthers a legitimate public purpose and must be supported by competent substantial evidence placed on the record tonight.
Right. Does our interpretation, in your opinion, Madam Attorney, constitute enough for option two to stand up in the court of law if we are taking, if that happens?
Yes, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, case law, that's what we rely on to figure out what these standards of review mean. Case law has indicated, based on a 1957 Supreme Court case, is that that level of evidence, which is sufficiently relevant and material, that a reasonable mind would accept it as adequate to support the conclusion reached. That is what competent substantial evidence means.
Mr. Chair, I agree with, I do agree with the motion on the floor, actually, I want to vote for it, I'm going to vote for it, but what I'm wondering, considering here is, if we go down that road of voting for it, we get into litigation, will us simply sitting here saying that we don't agree with our planning, our planning staff's recommendation be enough to constitute making this decision? I would hope so, but I'm just not totally sure at this point. So, what my thought was, and I'll make a substitute motion to that effect, is that we table this item and have a little more review come back from staff on if that would constitute our objecting to staff's recommendation. I just, I just think we run into a problem there because staff did recommend, and I can't get it clear, matter of fact, before I rescind my substitute motion. Madam County Attorney, can you give me a yes or no that you feel, in your professional opinion, that us saying no based off of the evidence that we have before us constitute enough for you to be able to defend this decision in a court of law? Can you say yes or no to that?
Madam County Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wouldn't like my odds, but I would defend it.
Could you restate that, please?
I would not like my odds, but I would defend it.
You would not like your odds, but you would defend it. I make a substitute motion that we table the item.
Is there a second for the motion to table? The substitute motion to table? Mr. Proctor?
Thank you.
Was that a second?
No, it's not. No, no, no.
Okay, so the motion fails for lack of a second.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chair, I've got Commissioner Dozier on the speaker's list, and then Commissioner Cummings, and then you're next, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Maddox, I do understand your concern, and like I said, County Attorney and I talked a few times about this, and I really appreciate your help. and I talked a few times about this, and I really appreciate your help. To get to this point in a quasi judicial hearing, we have to look at the information that's provided to us. And I do see the interpretation of our staff and the planning commission and others, but I also see a very competent lawyer and others who have done a lot of work on this pointing to specifics in the DRI, the PUD, others that I believe point to a justified reason to oppose this. Now, if it is brought in on appeal, I say we go and defend it. We have seen these issues come back to us after an appeal is won. I think the last time was the Summerbrook issue. So this is the appropriate process, Madam County Attorney, that is correct, that if we find that there is substantial evidence that, and I do love this phrase, that a reasonable mind would accept. I feel like I'm pretty reasonable, so I'm seeing that evidence, and the board votes. There are other steps in this procedure that the applicant can take, and we let that play out. But if we're seeing that evidence, we can vote to deny.
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, yes, there is a process, and ultimately, if it ends up in litigation, a court would decide what a reasonable mind would determine based on what's in the record, whether that constitutes competent substantial evidence. But point of order, was there a second for Commissioner Maddox's substitute motion, so it died?
No, the substitute motion failed.
Just wanted to keep it straight. Okay, thank you.
I'm just not sure if we would get that answer, Commissioner Maddox, before we went through the, unless we went through that process anyhow. So I think we should move forward today. I'm just going to conclude with this and say, master plans, planned unit developments are a guiding principle. And from my perspective, there are a number of things in those documents that have been drawn out in this material that show the intent to preserve this open space, and I don't see an overwhelming reason why we should have an amendment to a master plan for a single family lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Cummings?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just had a couple of questions, point of clarification, I suppose. I know there's a motion to table. Oh, it didn't, it didn't stick, I'm sorry.
Or I've not.
Okay, all right. And then my other question, I guess, is perhaps directed to legal counsel, as far as, once the applicant, which we have here, makes the application for the deviation, I guess, is the burden on the applicant to go forward? And then where we are now, staff felt as though they carry their burden, that's why we have the recommendation for the variance? Is that pretty much where we are?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner Cummings, the applicant submitted all the documentation, followed all the procedural requirements, planning staff looked at the application, compared it to all the documents, including the comprehensive plan, determined that it was consistent, which is why the planning commission and staff recommended approval as option one.
And then, may I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Then if we table this particular item as suggested by Commissioner Maddox, then what's the purpose? To table it for staff to go back and look at it or to get more information? I'm not sure what that posture would be.
Yes, Commissioner Maddox, in response.
I'll point to the question. My logic is this, we're one government, we make decisions and say no. There's an appeal process that happens, we go to court. The court sees our decision, votes and says, okay, well, their staff says something different, we see something different, so we're going to go ahead and move forward with it. If we postpone this, the city sees this, says no, we see it, we say no. You've got two governing bodies that are saying the same thing, and they're saying no to this decision, and it gives us more, I would think, that would give the attorney more of a leg to stand on if it's challenged. Now, let me say this out front. We could say no today, and they could put on a senior agenda, they cannot, they could say no, we can get the same result, which, you know, so be it. I just want to give my county attorney the best chance he has to actually be able to stand in the court of law and say, well, this is what this board saw, and this is why they said no. I just think you've got two governments saying no is better than one. If it's going to be challenged in judging by the situation, I think it could be challenged. So I was just trying to give our county attorney a better leg to stand on with two governments instead of one. So I would recommend that even if we say no tonight, that the City Commission still take this up, but they may choose not to. And that's the reason I asked to postpone, because if we do, then they have to.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Cummings, you still have a second.
Thank you. No, I appreciate his clarification. And since his motion failed, what I'd like to do is just renew the motion to postpone it, and let's see what the city does with it.
Okay, so you basically have a substitute motion to.
Is it substitute? About his fail, absolutely, yes.
Is there a second to the substitute motion?
I would second that.
Okay, the motion to table has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to table? Commissioner Dozier and then Commissioner Proctor.
I really do appreciate the caution. I, this is a serious matter, and I have looked at the information pretty closely. I did want to just clarify that the specifics I'm referring to are coming from Mr. Weiss from Osley Law Firm, that letter specific. I think that brings in substantial evidence that a reasonable mind may use to deny this. This is on our agenda, it was noticed, it is quasi judicial, and at the next meeting in December, we have another amendment coming to us on Southwood. It will be the Seventh Amendment. So I truly do appreciate your caution, and particularly having a legal mind on the commission with us now, I absolutely appreciate your questions, Commissioner Cummings. I would simply say, I think if we do agree, or a majority of us, that we should deny this based on this evidence, we can also encourage the city to take it up. Now, we don't know how the city is going to act, I certainly don't know that. I know, so I think it is important, if a majority of us agree with the original motion, that we take action tonight to signal to the city what we think. It's on the agenda. If we move this, if we wait to see what the city does, and then we take it up in December, we're going to have two amendments in the same night, potentially, I don't know, I mean, we've got some massive agendas here. So I think we're ready to go, we've seen the evidence, we've heard the public speakers. I would just encourage us to do that, and even if we direct staff to encourage the city to continue taking up the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Welch, I see you, sir. Madam County Attorney, can you speak a little bit about what this motion to spend might be? Do we need to have like a time certain for how this motion would have a limit to come back to us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So really, this is a public hearing that was publicly noticed. What you would do is schedule it or to continue it to a date and time certain, which would be your December meeting or some other date that you set at a future time.
So basically, what you're saying is that we would need to obviously have enough ample notice to have a public hearing notice to have it come back to us? Is that basically the point?
Correct.
All right, thank you, Madam County Attorney. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would echo Commissioner Dozier's comments. I'm not in support of the substitute motion. I think that, you know, it's time to move it on down the road, so, you know, I think kind of an agreement for the most part.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. In effort to, I see where this is going, and I just, again, my thought here was to try to get our county attorney some help as far as being able to stand on a legal leg here, in an effort to move this along throughout the night and get us through the night. I'll go ahead and rescind my second, but what I would ask is that the county attorney, I'm sorry, the county attorney and the manager express to the city that we would like for them to take this up. Again, because we say no is one thing, and I see the same evidence you do, Commissioner Dozier. But the thing is, is that we got a whole staff that we believe in, that we've complimented over and over again on how well they do things, and how professional they are, and how smart they are, just telling us that this is a go. We have a planning commission who says the same thing, we're the governing body, and we're saying something different. And so I just want to give, again, my county attorney the leg to stand on and say, you've got two governing bodies that said no to this, and that we're in lockstep on it. If the city decides to say something different, then we've got a bigger problem. But I just wanted to give her some leg to stand on. So I rescind my second, we can go ahead with the primary motion unless there is another second to the second, to the.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Is there a second for the secondary motion to table? Seeing none, it does revert back to the original motion, which was option two on the agenda item. Mr. Vice Chair Proctor.
Madam County Attorney, what is the advantage of our deferring, in a sense, to the city and our waiting and hitting the pause button tonight? Do we advantage ourselves at all?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there are two different things that could happen. If the county denies it, there's no need for the, if the city denies it, there's no need for the county to act, because it takes an affirmative vote of both of the governing bodies to approve the DRI amendment. So they would effectively be in the same position, we would be in the same position the city may be in if this body denies and goes with option two tonight. The commission could request that staff bring back additional information and analysis in the interim. That's the other potential positive of tabling and continuing date and time certain.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. I think that there are times and moments when we have to man up and woman up, and what these citizens have said, and one of the good things about this standard of a reasonable mind is that in law, a reasonable mind is one of the most loosey-goosey abstract notions there is. We have been elected by citizens, and often, and from my observations, I have never seen a court, I mean, it has to be a strong exception for the court to oppose the presumptive reasonableness of the minds of those seven people who are elected to represent the citizens of this community. I ain't seen a judge that has said the county commission is without reasonable minds, if for no other reason than we are elected to govern and to make these decisions. So if in our minds and way of seeing and thinking, there's nobody downstairs that's going to challenge and say that the county commission is not reasonable, it ain't never happened. I ain't never seen it. Our council probably may have seen something like that. So what I've heard tonight, a homeowner who said, we don't want the goalpost to move, and we barged into this thing, and the sheet of paper read, dot, 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 about this open space, and then down the road, what the homeowner said, and this is a public hearing, and I don't even know why, we done had a public hearing for an hour, if the public's voice don't matter. I wouldn't have wasted an hour up here messing around with this if I was not over being persuaded by what I heard. I don't even want to be right here knowing that COVID and all of that. So what I heard, the majority of the people said, and the reasonableness of my mind is based on the reason of the minds that spoke tonight. I ain't got no thought of my own, but I heard enough thoughts projected from the people who done put their money down. And them people that was talking tonight, these are not folk on the side lined up in the stands. I'm just, I don't live in Southwood, but the people that done put their money down, vested in it and invested in it, said that this right here moves the goalpost, it fosters a slippery slope, that it's first domino falls in the mentality of converting small, this is a small little thingy, it chants the reason that greed kicks in and all of that. But I will support Commissioner Dozier's motion. I will respect the district commissioner over there, and let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Seeing no other speakers on this item, we'll move to a vote for option two, moved by Commissioner Dozier and seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Next item will be introduced by the county attorney, number 22. Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Five of the seven commissioners are fairly familiar with this particular agenda item. It's come back a couple of different times, and what you have before you tonight in this public hearing is a proposed draft ordinance that addresses the six questions that the commission initially posed at the meeting earlier this year, and that started literally in January, on January 28, while we were meeting in person previously before we went to virtual. And then we had a subsequent discussion about it on March 10 as well. So just to reiterate very briefly, this kind of simplifies the definition of lobbyist by moving the exemptions to a different part of the code. It aligns the forms that are required with the text that was previously in the code. There was a disconnect there. And I would like to do a shout out to Clerk Marshall. She's been very collaborative in working to develop the product that you have before you in terms of the forms, and she's expressed a desire, again, to move to accept payment and registrations in the forms online, and she's working on that as well. So it also does create a different enforcement model for the lobbyist registration. It removes the notary requirement on the lobbyist's registration application form. It adds the key connection to the lobbyist's registration webpage and provides the lobbyist may speak at county publicly noticed meetings without having to first register as a lobbyist. Those are the main changes to the ordinance, and the rest is just kind of streamlining and fleshing things out procedurally. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. On the speaker's queue, I have Commissioner Jackson.
Move option one.
Mr. Chairman, you do have one speaker?
Yeah, right.
I'm sorry.
What do we do with a speaker?
I'll be happy to call him, sir.
Yes, it'd be great, Alan, thank you.
You have one speaker on the line, a Mr. Ben Wilcox.
Good evening, Chair, my name is Commissioner, I'm Ben Wilcox, representing Citizens for Ethics Forum. My address is 1719 Old Fort Drive. We endorse this proposed ordinance, and we congratulate the county commission for taking on this important issue. In the future, we recommend that the county commission further strengthen its lobbying registration requirements. In January of this year, the Tallahassee Democrat published a series of reports detailing how lobbyists were meeting with local government officials without first registering with the government as lobbyists. This proposed ordinance or thought will not solve that problem. We believe that you need to revise and tighten your definition of a lobbyist, so it does away with a loophole in the current definition that allows individuals to claim to be consultants and therefore not subject to the lobby registration requirement. The current definition of a lobbyist is essentially this. Lobbyist means a person who is employed and receives payment for lobbying. There is nothing in that definition that covers someone who aims to be employed as a consultant, but who is actually acting as a lobbyist. The city's independent ethics board is recommending changes to the city's definition of a lobbyist that we believe will eliminate this loophole and require these unregistered lobbyists to register. We recommend you consider similar language for your definition. We also recommend that an unregistered lobbyist should be prohibited from appearing before or meeting with commissioners or public officials. When meeting formally or informally with public officials, paid lobbyists should be required to sign in and provide basic information in logs available to the public. Commissioners and staff should be required to ensure. Commissioners and staff should be required to ensure that lobbyists are registered before meeting with them. Disclosure by lobbyist should also include expenditures for grassroots political engagement. Intingency fee lobbying should be prohibited. Currently, Miami-Dade and most of its municipalities prohibit contingency fee lobbying. It is also prohibited at the state level. Finally, we believe that violations could result in heavier penalties. Thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars, five thousand dollars for the first three violations, and a three-year suspension from lobbying for a fourth violation. Since we have not previously communicated these recommendations to the county commission, we cannot fault that they have not been included in this proposed ordinance. We look forward to working with you to address these suggestions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Mr. County Administrator, are there any other speakers?
We've got one additional speaker card in on this item, Barney Bishop.
Well, Mr. Bishop, if you could give your name and full address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Barney Bishop. I live at 2215 Thomasville Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I want to congratulate the county commission and chairman for doing an excellent job on this new lobbyist registration. Uh, I think it's the right thing to do. You're going in the right direction and I applaud you for doing this because the public has a right to know who is trying to advocate. And I say that as a lobbyist, uh, in fact, a lobbyist that wasn't always registered according to the Tallahassee Democrat, but I was the only lobbyist that admitted that. Every other lobbyist had an excuse. Uh, I didn't have an excuse and I didn't try to make an excuse, but I think this is the right thing to do and I applaud you for doing it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. County Administrator, any other speakers?
That concludes our speakers on this.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Jackson is first on the speaker queue and after that, Commissioner Maddox.
Yeah, um, remind me if I'm going off of queue here. I'm going to make a motion for option one, but I can't talk about it, correct? Okay, I can discuss it.
Yes.
Right. Uh, Chastity, outstanding work, you and your staff, or excuse me, Madam Attorney, outstanding work by you and your staff to come up with 24-page lobbying policy that is incredible. Uh, I want to applaud, uh, Commissioner and Chair now. Minor, um, for this is his brainchild and as the, um, as the chair, he's unable to make this motion, but I'll happily make it for him. Uh, his, uh, interest in, in development of this as a, um, item, uh, has provided a fairly foolproof policy that I think that, um, we should be proud of as well. With that, I'll move option one.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Jackson. Uh, motion's been seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Uh, next on the speaker's queue is, uh, Commissioner Dozier.
I was, but I'll yield to you.
Oh, sir, actually, let me try to go through the order. So, uh, Commissioner Maddox, you're next, sir. You sure? My mistake. Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, it's not an easy transition to go from vice chair to chair. You're doing a great job and there's a lot to keep up with, so thank you for that. Um, so, um, I echo, I think, uh, Commissioner Jackson, you summed it up quite well. This is a great item. A lot of good work has gone into it. So Madam County Attorney, I truly appreciate this. Um, it is different than we've seen some other bodies take up, but I really like the, um, process that is in place, the enforcement process. I think this is just addressing a lot of gaps that existed before and then taking a next step to have a really robust ordinance. So I, I, I do, um, support the motion that's on the floor. I think, you know, we're going to see this in effect for a while and we may have other questions come out in the next year, two years, a few years, and we need to stay vigilant and look at these issues. Um, but I don't think it's time to make any other changes. I did want to just add that there are comments that have come up. Mr. Wilcox just, um, referred to this about tightening the, uh, definition of lobbyist to include consultants. And I think this is an important point that we're hearing from a lot of our constituents on a lot of different issues here, Blueprint, CRTPA, obviously, both of those boards need to establish or they could establish their own rules. Um, I've actually talked to the executive director at CRTPA recently about this, um, because some questions had come up to him from constituents. So I think those boards could take it up independently. For us, I think the question of consultants and the role of consultants, particularly in development agreements, when you have, um, questions or concerns coming from citizens, and we've just heard this with Southwood, we've heard it with Lulani, we've heard it with others, to counter, um, the work done by professionals in this field, whether they're consultants, engineers, others, is a huge lift for residents. And I think that's really where a lot of this, uh, the, the rub comes in often. There may be ways that we could address that question. Maybe there's more disclosure, maybe there's procedural issues when we go through the development process or working with staff. I would love to have that conversation. I'm not sure it needs to be in the lobbying ordinance, but I just wanted to take this moment, Mr. Chair, to say, "I hear those concerns and I do agree." I mean, if we just look at Keep It Rule, Kalaran, Buckhead, and ATN, the amount, the number of hours, I mean, those folks would have been paid thousands of dollars had they been an engineering firm or a PR firm or some other type of consultant. They did it because they were committed to the work, to committed to their neighbors, and they, by our staff's admission, they lent a tremendous amount to that prog, that process. So we want to keep that door open. Again, I would love to have that conversation in the future, maybe find a way to do that, but this ordinance, I think it should stand as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Maddox, did you want to speak, sir? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Cummings.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairperson. I just basically wanted to commend the county attorney and staff for this particular document. It's certainly, uh, informative and directive for me as a new kid on the block. So I just wanted to briefly say, "Great document." Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mrs. Cummings. Uh, Commissioner Cummings, sorry about that. Um, just to kind of wrap things up on my end, uh, um, I wanted to thank the city, the county attorney and, uh, and her office for the incredible work on this. This is very thorough and comprehensive. Uh, a lot of work went into it and it, it shows. So thank you very much to you and, and, and your team. Also want to thank Clerk Glenn Marshall for coordinating with you on, on making the process more streamlined and, and, uh, easier for everybody. And also want to thank, um, Max Hurley, who's a lobbyist, but he works closely with, um, the county attorney and, and me, uh, providing input on how it'd be easier for a lobbyist to register online and to pay online, but also, really importantly, how it'd be better for citizens in terms of accountability and transparency. And I, I want to thank him specifically for that. Um, you know, lobbyists sometimes have a bad rap, um, but, uh, they also are citizens here too. And I want to give Max his due credit for helping us, uh, uh, provide some, provided some very good insight on how to make this better for citizens. So, um, with that, let's go ahead and I'll move on to the vote. Uh, the motion for option one to accept this, uh, was made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor of the items, say aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. County Administrator, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, item number 23, uh, requests the boards, the board to conduct the first of two required public hearings to consider an ordinance repealing or replacing the floodplain management section and amend the floodplain-related definitions in the general definitions sections of the Land Development Code. These revisions are a migration to the state model ordinance. It will ensure compliance with state national standards and enhance the county's efforts toward improving its community rating, thereby lowering floodplain...
Chairman, I move staff recommendation.
We have no speakers on this item.
Okay, motions made by Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Any discussion? All those in favor of this item, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. So now we will go ahead and revert back to our original order, uh, which was on agenda item 17. On the, uh, minority women-owned business, small business enterprises and the FAMU Federal Credit Union to establish a $1 million revolving micro lending program. And just to remind, uh, the board, uh, the motion made by Commissioner Maddox still applies. So the, uh, comments, responses by county commissioners shall be limited to three minutes apiece. Uh, the original motion was for options one, two, and three, uh, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Um, on the speakers, I have Commissioner Maddox and then Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I believe the county administrator received a letter from, uh, the respective chambers, uh, in respect to some things that they would like to see us, see us look at as far as policy is concerned. I think what we're doing here, what we're doing today is a great start. Uh, it was good to see that, that the feds were able to allow us to, the privilege of being able to do something like this and start this micro loan program. But I think, uh, with the success of the monies that we're going to invest, if we could look at out years, maybe, um, some kind of continued investment or even the conversation that we're going to have in workshop, we're going to have at Blueprint around addressing some of the issues that were brought forth by both chambers and, and the letters that were sent to the county administrator and, and cityman and, and city manager, uh, that would, would move us along much, much further. And so as long as I'm proud, I am very proud to support this item and make the motion for this item. I want to see us to continue to push hard for our minority businesses, especially in the way this micro loan program and other things that could help them with capital, uh, for their, for their respective businesses. So I'm very proud of what we're doing today, but let's, let's continue to push it, keep the ball moving forward. One of those policies that those chambers, the big, big minority chambers, well as the Capitol City Chamber, have acted, have asked us to look into as legislative bodies and policymakers for our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I may be reading too much into it, but I, I got the sense, Commissioner Maddox, that you were expecting a long debate about this earlier and that's why you made the comment. Um, I fully support this item. I, the questions that came up over the summer were about where we would draw the money for some program like this, and we were anticipating the revolving loan fund. Um, we, I think we had just gotten awarded, um, a million, or $800,000 by the Economic Development Administration. The creativity in this program and the incredible work by our team to convince, uh, Treasury to, um, update the rules, we'll say that, and that gives all counties more flexibility with CARES dollars, um, is just extraordinary. And it's put us in a position to not just have a million-dollar revolving loan fund, but now a second fund of a million dollars for micro loans. And I, I, I think that is incredible work and the staff report showing all of the different types of funding, um, resources that we have available, I think that's really important as well. And one thing I, um, talked to the county administrator about, and I appreciate the follow-up information from you all, um, was that we have so many good programs now that I'm really hopeful that we will co-market those programs. And I, I wish, um, oh, uh, our, our speakers were still here, um, from earlier. Um, uh, I really wanted to compliment President Montgomery on the history of the FAMU Credit Union. Um, I think they're the right place to have this program, but they may have clients come in that should qualify for a lower, um, loan amount. And typically we see micro loans maybe going as low as $500 or something like that, and we, we've identified other programs that would work for those folks. This particular one, I think, was started at about $5,000. So, um, I think it's not only a great program, I'm glad we're moving forward, but this cohort of programs that we have now could provide a lot of access to capital for people who have been denied or just not been able to navigate the system because they don't have a relationship with a bank or a credit union or someplace that goes back a long time. So I'm excited about it, um, and I think anything we can do, I look forward to an update from OED, Mr. County Administrator. Um, I assume that will be forthcoming on the marketing piece and everything like that, and, um, I'm really excited to see these programs get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Uh, seeing no other speakers, let me go ahead and wrap this up. I just, I, I really was excited to read this agenda item, uh, and, and the change in status of how we could apply Leon CARES funds. Uh, I want to give a big shout out to the folks at the, uh, the Office of Economic Vitality, Christina Paredes, Dale Jones, for working, uh, on this to make sure that we could use these funds for this purpose. So very excited about this item, uh, very excited to vote for it. Um, all those in favor of this item, this is basically option one, two, and three, motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Cummings, uh, say aye? Aye. All opposed, say nay? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, Mr. County Administrator, the next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item presents the final report and recommendations of a consultant study which evaluated strategies to ensure the long-term viability of the county's recycling program, as you all know. Uh, as the agenda item discusses in detail, the county has maintained a successful recycling program for many years in support of our environmental stewardship efforts. Like other local governments, our recycling program has evolved over time and reflects changes in the recycling industry to adopt best practices and to increase participation. Over the last, uh, few years, Commissioners, uh, the market for recycled materials has declined significantly and as a result of policy changes in other countries that historically, uh, were the major, uh, importers of recycled materials. The agenda item before you includes a much more detailed discussion of these changes and how they've impacted the recycling industry, but at a very high-level summary, uh, when the county contracted with Marpan in 2013 for our current single-stream recycling program, the markets were strong and recycling program generated, uh, modest revenues for the county. Today, recycling no longer pays for itself, and, uh, this means that recycling programs, uh, often have to be supported by other revenues to maintain viability. Uh, as Commissioners, we've noted throughout this item, many communities around the country have elected to suspend their recycling programs entirely, uh, rather than to continue to incur additional costs. At the February 11th meeting, Commissioners, you approved a short-term interim agreement, uh, with Marpan, which allowed the county more time to explore options for a future recycling program. At that time, the board also authorized the county administrator, uh, to engage a consultant in partnership with the city to evaluate policy options to remain, uh, to keep the, the, the program, uh, viable as well in the long term. And as we've discussed in detail in this item, Commissioners, the study conducted, uh, an, an extensive analysis of our current recycling program and evaluated several alternative approaches and policy options. Based on this analysis, the study concluded that negotiating a new agreement with Marpan is our best option for the county. In short, the county's agreement with Marpan compares well to other local governments in terms of what we're paying to operate our recycling program. The county is not likely to realize any cost savings or other program enhances, enhancements through any other options reviewed. Uh, based on our preliminary discussions with Marpan, Commissioners, we anticipate that a new agreement would continue to be competitive with other jurisdictions' recycling costs. And with that, Commissioners, this item recommends, uh, two, uh, recommendations for your consideration. The first is to negotiate me to, uh, or to authorize me to negotiate a new agreement with, with Marpan for our single-stream recycling program, which I'll bring back to your approval early next year. And should you wish to provide that direction, Commissioners, I will bring back recommendations for funding the new contract as part of next year's budget process. And the recommendation, um, is also to extend our current agreement with Marpan for the remainder of the fiscal year, uh, which the county can do at our own discretion under the current co, contract. And this also contemplates, uh, the funding that's been previously approved, uh, by the board, uh, for that purpose and...
Chairman, I move both those recommendations and say I'm very, very pleased and proud that we have Marpan in this situation at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Proctor for the motion. And who's seconded? Commissioner Dozier, sorry about that. Um, Mr. County Administrator, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not have speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, thank you, sir. Um, any discussion on this item? Vice Chair Proctor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do, I do have a queue here. Still getting the hang of things. Um, Commissioner Dozier, I have you on the list.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I thought there was someone else in queue. Um, I think this item is as good as we can get right now, given the market conditions. It was pretty dramatic to see, uh, the revenue of years ago, 14, 15 or so, if I can remember correctly. Um, I did, I guess, just a little PSA, I heard a news story the other day about the value of cardboard going up because of the pandemic. We're all staying home and there was actually people encouraging all of us to recycle every bit of cardboard we can because of all the packages that we're receiving from online orders. So that may be one little interesting bright spot. Um, Mr. County Administrator, when you bring this back, um, I, I would like a better understanding of, um, how the city is going to move forward on this. Um, we talked about this a little bit in briefing, but, um, it has been my understanding that they're allowing more commercial recycling and I'm not quite clear if that's universal... allowing more commercial recycling, and I'm not quite clear if that's universal or not. But the question about apartment complexes keeps coming up, and if this is an issue of volume for recycled material, that would be one thing that I think could really help us. I know it's challenging, particularly when we've got student populations, but we could really try to address that. The other thing I was going to mention is I did have a quick conversation with one of our colleagues in Wakulla County, and I saw that they already contracted with Marpan, that I think some of, you know, our surrounding counties are interested in looking at this, and if that can help us in the future, support the volume of materials going to Marpan and help get their numbers right, looking at this as a regional issue would be really great. So any problems with that, or does that need to be a part of the motion, Mr. County Administrator?
Mr. County Administrator.
Actually, no, we'd be happy to include that in what we bring back to you.
Point of order, the main goal of the motion left, therefore, I'll make the motion if you'll second it.
I'll second it, there we go. We got it, Madam Attorney, yeah. So, but we don't need that to be part of the new motion, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Really appreciate this, and shout out to our sustainability staff, they're working hard on this item and other things that were on consent, so this is great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Maddox.
Briefly, I think we've enjoyed, Commissioner Dozier can speak to this probably more than the rest of the Commissioners. We've enjoyed the partnership with Marpan for years now, and he's given us a heck of a deal, almost putting himself out of business is the deal that he's given us. And so, for us to be able to continue to have him and try to work something out with Marpan, that we can keep that business going, is a pretty amazing thing. So I look forward to seeing what comes back from you, Ms. County Administrator, and knowing that even the thought of us being able to keep that, a local business providing that service for our county is pretty big. So thank you so much for bringing this item back. It's more than just how we're going to recycle, it's an economic development engine for our community, as well as a slap on the back and thank you to a Marpan and Kim Williams for sticking with us so many years when he could have closed up shop. I think we were here, what, five years ago, and so when he was talking about, he don't know if he's going to be able to do it, and he reeled up with his then, so this is a good item, and I appreciate what Marpan has done for this community and what he will continue to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Maddox. I just want to reiterate what you said, sort of, I think this, Kim Williams and Marpan have had a longstanding relationship with the county and have served the people who live here very well. So motion on the floor is to adopt options 1 and 2. Motion made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor, say aye. Yes, Mr. Maddox.
Motion was made by myself, seconded by Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Proctor, and I change.
Okay. All right, motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Next item, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Commissioners, next item just seeks your approval on the process for the nominations to the governor for the appointment of the Leon County Children's Services Council. We have two speakers on this item, we're recommending option 1.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Who's, move on to the first speaker, please.
First speaker, Barney Bishop.
Good evening, my name is Barney Bishop, 2215 Thomasville Road. I don't think I've ever spoken this many times to y'all ever. As many of y'all know, I was a vociferous opponent to the Children's Services Council, but that was because of the way that it was set up, not because of the concept, I support that, and I've spent a quarter of a century representing substance abuse, mental health, juvenile justice, and adult correction, not-for-profits in Tallahassee and around the state. So I wanted to just give you five suggestions on how I think that you might want to vet future appointees that you're going to send on to the governor. Number one, I would like to recommend that you not put yes people on this, on your appointment list. You need to have people who are objective but are willing to ask tough questions and more importantly, demand comprehensive and straight-out answers. Why? Because these are tax dollars, and there aren't going to be any elected officials that are going to be directly responsible. You're going to be setting this up through the referendum, governor makes the appointments, but you're not going to have under state law any ability to change one penny, one decimal point, one dollar. So that means that you need to have, and my second suggestion, fiscal conservatives, because you need to have people that are going to look out for the tax dollars, and that's going to be important, because again, you're not going to have the ability to have a check. You can talk about the budget that the C S E presents to you, but you can't change a single penny in it. Three, don't build a new bureaucracy. You don't need to. We went through this 15 years ago with state-certified not-for-profits that did behavioral healthcare, and they resisted it because they didn't want to go to evidence-based programming, and they did not want to have benchmarks or outcomes. But the best interest for you and the taxpayers is to make sure that all of the local not-for-profits move on a certification process over a two-, three-year span so that they become, number one, evidence-based programming, and number two, that they have benchmarks and outcomes in their contracts. Now, there's going to be a lot of not-for-profits, the local mom and pops, that don't have the ability to do that. So how do you make that happen? You make that happen with the F S U School of Social Work, with the FAMU School of Social Work, they've got graduate students every year. It'd be a wonderful project for these students to help local not-for-profits find the evidence-based programming, because what you want to do, I think, and what us taxpayers want you to do, is to make sure that the dollar's going to be spent, we're going to get the best bang for the buck. Let's make sure that they're efficacious and they're successful. So number one, they need the help on the evidence-based programming. Number two, they're going to need help on I T, infrastructure, because they're not going to have the computer system to be able to do longitudinal tracking to see how successful they are. Number four, comprehensive gap analysis.
Mr. Bishop, I'm sorry, your time's expired.
Then plan a transition, and then keep the administrative cost under 4%.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. County Administrator, our next speaker, please.
Final speaker, Jason Zabasky, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I'm going to keep my comments very short, we're at the end of the agenda. Listening to you, Mr. Maddox, Commissioner Maddox, thank you very much for your comments, and we did have a long discussion earlier. I'm here to address the commission about the Children's Services Council. I'm a very strong proponent of this, and I believe I'll say one thing. I need you, I would hope that this body puts children's advocates on this appointed group of people. People that know the programs in this community, know which ones work, which ones are proven effective, as Mr. Bishop said, save taxpayer money, prevent things instead of reacting to problems in this community. So I hope the group puts together 15 very solid people that are going to advocate for children and families in this community and do what the voters in this community overwhelmingly decided in November. And I want to also thank full board, full commission here, but also new Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Cummings. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. County Administrator, that's the last speaker?
Yes, sir.
Any motions to reduce?
Move option number one, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Ms. Chair, also, I'd like to make a subsidiary motion, three minutes per Commissioner.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion on the secondary motion? Okay, to vote on the secondary motion, which would limit comments from county commissioners to three minutes apiece, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. What was it?
It fails.
Three, four? Okay. So the motion?
Two, four.
Two in favor, four against?
Well, couldn't be three, four, I could.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, so the motion, the motion fails. Going back to the original motion for option 1, made by Commissioner Maddox, is there a second on that?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, this is a good item. I like the way staff has presented it, I look forward to seeing the names that will come back, or actually seeing the people who will apply for these positions. What we have to understand here is that the people that we place, Mr. Bishop, I thank you so much for your recommendation, these people that we place, that will be sent to the governor for his approval, will have taxing rights that we will have absolutely nothing to say about. And so, as we consider those who apply, I ask that, and I know we will, we consider that fact, we consider that fact, and we also consider the fact that we have to balance that with the fact that we have that same taxing authority. And so, I look forward to seeing the names that come back, I look forward to, I hope that we have a lot of citizens apply, because I want to have, I want to have a wider range of folks to pick from as we possibly can. I will say that I'm looking for some, a large amount of diversity on this, on this board, for this organization, and I'm talking about from, all the way from demographically to racially to economic, their echo, I'm sorry, their, what's my look for, Kristen? Economic diversity as far as, racial diversity and others as far as this board is considered, because the people that these organizations serve will come from, I want some of these people to be on, some of the board members to be from those neighborhoods, so. But then again, I also think that having people from other sides of town would be just as relevant as well. So if I could have it my way, actually, it would be one of those things where every district has a representative from that district, and maybe the at-large is, pick at-large from districts as well, just to create that diversity that I'm asking for. And so, that being said, I look forward to voting on the item again, seeing people, seeing the folks to come back from the item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all the members of the C S E team, their leadership team, they did a substantial amount of work in the last couple of years. I'll actually thank Mr. Bishop Hugh and the others who opposed it. I mean, there was a lot of robust community discussion, as there should be before a referendum like this, but we are in a community that has once again proven that we are willing to invest in ourselves. I think, you know, with 65% approval of this amendment, it really signals an understanding of how important this is and how much good we can do for our community, for economics, for all kinds of other kinds of goals if we invest in our children. So I'm excited to support this. I understand and agree with Commissioner Maddox's comments about the diversity of the board, but also that we need people who really are going to work to form the C S E. I mean, this initial board is going to be a heavy lift if you're forming an organization. I'm going to be looking really carefully at those applications, and I appreciate, Ms. County Administrator, the detail in here about the requirement, people submit a resume or a description of what they bring to the table, why they want to be on the C S E. We need to see what skills they've got, why they want to be on the board. And I guess the other thing, Mr. Chair, is I don't think there's a better way to do the appointments. It's always a kind of a challenging thing when each commissioner gets two appointments, and I like the format that you've got in the item, Mr. County Administrator. I hope we can have some conversation when we see this item about the skill sets we're looking for, because that diversity you're talking about, Commissioner Maddox, is, you know, a lot of ways, it's going to be a diversity of experience and skills that people bring to the board. We don't need a whole hoof of, you know, one type of experience, because we're going to need a lot of different perspectives. So I look forward to this, I hope we get a lot of great applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to real briefly say, you know, as a school teacher, this is close to my heart, and I think the Children's Services Council has a great potential for success. I think the voters have spoken. I appreciate the folks who had concerns about administering such a program, and I'm looking forward to having some input into making sure that we administer that program correctly to have maximum impacts, and I think Commissioner Jackson would echo that, right? This is just a tremendous opportunity for our community to really have a big impact on, across areas of economic and educational segregation, so I'm looking forward to participating in this process.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner Welch. Seeing no other speakers, I just wanted to say that I had the honor of serving on the Children's Services Council Planning Committee leading up to the vote, and it's a great group of people, very committed to improving the welfare of children in this county, very excited about this moving forward. I think, you know, I want to thank Mr. Bishop for coming, I agree with him, I was saying this on the planning committee since day one, we, I think it's day one, we need to have accountability and transparency on the C S E, we have to. We also need people on the C S E that are committed, that have demonstrated a commitment to serving the needs of kids in this county. I think those two criteria, at least in my mind, when I look through these applications, will be running through my, running through my mind. So with that, all those in favor of option 1? Motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Administrator, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item seeks full board appointments to the Architectural Review Board and to the Leon Educational Facilities Authority, as reflected in options 1 and 2 of this item. We have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Any comments or motions put forth by the board? Yes, Mr. Commissioner Maddox.
I got a second.
It was, had my head down, I think it was for Commissioner Dozier with the second?
No. April Albert.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson. So, Mr. Option 1 and 2 made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay. I mean, say nay, unanimous. All right, next on the agenda, are citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Mr. County Administrator, any speakers, sir?
We do not.
Okay, great. Next order of business, our discussion items from the county attorney, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, congratulations to our incoming commissioners, Cummings and Welch, I look forward to working with you. The other item I have for the board this evening, I did provide a memorandum in advance, forgive me, it was three pages long, but considering, I think the last time memorandum on this particular item was provided to the board was back in 2018, just because a lot has been happening in the background, but there wasn't much of an update for the board. But I also tried to include a little bit of history on this issue related to Lake Talquin and being in impaired water, to give the incoming commissioners a little more background and context as well. So the first TMDL process was not successful, it was challenged by the company, they attacked the modeling, and they were successful in doing so. So the regulatory agency is basically moved back to the drawing board, they've been working on a new model. They anticipate that they will be issuing a new TMDL rule sometime in 2021. We do anticipate that the plant will again challenge it, which will put us into protracted litigation, it will be expensive and time-consuming. The option is the Q Bell process, which is outlined in the memo. That would place restrictions on the plant itself in terms of limiting the pollutants that the plant can permissibly, you know, basically end up having in the waters which lead into Lake Talquin. So EPA is considering that request, it's been submitted, it's our understanding that they are giving it serious consideration at this time. We are requesting that the board authorize the chair to issue a letter of support for the Q Bell approach. It could serve as a tipping point that the local body here in Leon County expresses support for that approach as an alternative to the TMDL rule.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Would there be a motion to authorize me to execute a letter to the US EPA in support of the water quality-based effluent limitation process? Okay, motions are made and seconded, this time, I'll, I'll give it to Commissioner Dozier this time, so.
Commissioner Cummings got it.
Okay, Commissioner Cummings. Oh, Commissioner Cummings. So we'll go to Commissioner Cummings. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Yes.
I don't want to prolong this, but I just want to thank the county attorney for providing the background. I, I think this was on deck back in 14 or 15 even. I mean, when I was chair, I remember working on this with our former county attorney. This is an incredible issue. I mean, it just, we have, we're fighting a good fight here. And we have been successful in these protracted legal issues, particularly when it comes to water quality from Georgia. So we got to stay the course and I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Next item is discussion items from the county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners Cummings and Welch. Again, congratulations. And like the county attorney said, we're so looking forward to, to working with you. And please, we know your families were here earlier. A, a, a special thank you to them in advance for allowing us to steal so much of your time and efforts. So also, congratulations, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair. And Claudia sent me a text and she admonished me to make sure, to make an announcement for everyone to get their flu shots. So please, everyone, get your flu shots. I even got mine yesterday. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I hand it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. What we'll do is we'll just, we'll go down the row here and give our new commissioners some chance to, to kind of hone their, their, their ideas for today. So Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, I, I want, I want the board to understand kind of where I'm coming from here on this three-minute thing. It's not as much as, as, as a policy for, for us for always. I just think that while we're, while we're in this pandemic and we're asking people to wear a mask, I, I think that we should consider ourselves, limiting ourselves to three minutes per item with the right to ask for extension. I, I don't think it hurts anybody if, 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 you know, if I say, hey, can we extend this item to everybody? Can I have two more minutes on this item with no objection from the board? That happens. But I just think it's a little bit disingenuous for us to, to stress the mask thing, push it so hard. Please let's go by CDC and then we sit here for five hours and discuss things. Now, if we're not in this, in this, in this setting and we, and we want to talk all day, if we're on Zoom, I have no problem with that. But given the fact that CDC is saying with so many, you only want so many people in a room at the same time for a limited amount of time, even if they have on their mask, that's the reason I keep pushing for. So I'm going to make this motion with that being the premise. And the motion is that as long as we're in chambers during the pandemic, that we limit debate on an item to three minutes per commissioner on all items. And that time can be extended with no objection from any other commissioner. So for example, if I'm speaking and my three minutes, three minutes are up, I ask the chair, the chair for consideration for two more minutes. He asks there any objection from any other board members? No, no objection. Then you get your two more minutes. But I, I think we set a precedence, just like we wear masks. We set a precedence for how we, what we think or how we're following those guidelines by trying to do something, since we got to meet in person anyway, to, to, to limit the time that we're in this space and be concise with our own comments when we're in this space. And so again, this is not forevermore. This is during the pandemic, while we're in in-person meetings. Now, if we go to Zoom meetings, does not apply.
I'll second the motion.
If we go, if we vote, as long as we're in these chambers, I'd like to see us do that and make it known that we're doing it for the sake of trying to be as close to the CDC standards as we possibly can. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll second the motion in case you didn't hear me the first time.
Thank you, Commissioner. I heard you. Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I appreciate it. The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Dozier.
I'll just chime in here and Commissioner Maddox, I'm struggling with this because I guess I'm a little confused. You did bring up the three minutes during a virtual meeting. So when I heard you earlier today, I didn't realize that you were now speaking about meetings in chambers because you have mentioned this before and the, our procedures and everything. I am embarrassed by what I'm about to say because the seven of us should, we are nowhere close to essential workers who are on the job every single day for the last eight months, who have to do a job and they have, you know, more risk than we hope people will have in their day-to-day lives during this pandemic. But on Tuesday nights for our commission meetings, we are essential. And if the governor will not allow us to meet virtually, we are essential and we got to be here. I feel dehydrated right now, but otherwise pretty protected. Now, to your good point, you are absolutely right. I do not think that people should be gathering for a concert right now. I'm, I'm glad people enjoy the football season, but I'm not going to go to the stadium myself. I, I feel like I need to be more protected than that. People are making their own choices. But in this room, I think it will take us more time to ask permission to speak longer. Now, I say this knowing that I will do my work to keep my comments shorter. But there are times like Southwood issues that it took us over an hour and we were, we were all making comments on that. The public's business takes time. And we have been limited in our ability to do that because of the virtual meetings. It's just harder for us to have conversations if there's, I mean, we, we did it as well as we could. But I think we can commit to each other and give, our new chairman, as you said right off the bat, let's try to keep our comments shorter. Now, we've been here for several hours, but there was, there was necessary accolades and remembrances to give and congratulations. I just, I, I think this is going to hamstring us and get us into debates on critical issues going forward. And I would prefer the chair to just gently remind us if we're taking too much time to wrap it up instead of having a steadfast rule. Now, if I'm in the minority, we'll abide by it and we'll see how it goes. But I think this is going to pose other challenges. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I've got Commissioner Cummings and then Commissioner Maddox.
Yes, Mr. Chairperson. I just want to comment on Commissioner Maddox's motion. I believe clearly we are public servants elected by the public, but I also believe that we need to lead by example as well. I am one of those individuals that strongly believe that this pandemic is serious. I believe that we protect ourselves with masks and in other ways as well. I believe that the business of the citizens here when we meet, and of course, this is my first meeting, but it's serious, it's serious business. However, I believe that we are in a serious time with this pandemic. And I believe that the parameters of his motion, that says minimum of three, but it may be extended with permission if no objective. I think that gives us latitude to express ourselves and also to make comments on pending matters before the commission. All of this is tempered by the pandemic. It's, it's, it's a motion, in my opinion, that's limited. Once we get beyond this, then we don't really have to think outside of the box as far as limiting our time sitting here at the meeting. But for purposes of the time that we are in now, considering the health, safety, and welfare of each one of us and our families, and also setting, I believe, a good example for the citizens. I believe it's, it's a good motion and I believe we, we should be concerned when we are in bricking water like we are tonight. We should be concerned about our health, safety, and welfare. And so I believe that's a good parameter for us in our meetings. But there's also latitude if we need to go beyond the three minutes.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Commissioner Maddox and then Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I want, I want to reiterate the idea. I think, Commissioner Dozier, when I make that comment about the three minutes before, I never asked for it to be enforced virtually. I think I used it in the context of explaining that we're parliamentary procedures, where, you know, we're supposed, we're supposed to do three minutes, but I didn't ask for it. And I remember vividly not asking for it. Now, the thing is that, again, just during the pandemic, if your time needs to be extended, just ask. Mr. Chair, I'd like to have two more minutes on this. Mr. Chair, ask, is there any objection? Takes two seconds for that to happen. I don't think anybody's going to object to it. But if you need more time, just be, just ask. So in a way, it's kind of saying, okay, be mindful, try to stay within the three minutes. But if you see yourself going over, just ask for more time and the, the board can, can consider giving you that time. Again, and it's just during the pandemic, just in meetings. I'm not trying to hamstring, limit anybody. If you feel like you need 20 minutes, ask for 20 minutes. But as a standard, while we're in this pandemic and we're trying to get through, we're trying to set a good example, let's just say we're going to set ourselves to three minutes. Now, I, I, I will myself, if I feel like I need more time, I'll ask. I think we have that prerogative as elected officials that if we need that more time, we ask. And I think that of the people I see sitting up here, I don't think anybody would be inconsiderate of that, of saying if you ask for five more minutes, that, hey, no, you can't have them. But as a standard, to show people that we're trying to live by the same example that we're asking them to when it comes to these masks, let's just stay out front. We're going to try and limit our comments to three minutes. So not trying to limit anybody as much as it is trying to lead by example and if you need more time, just ask for it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Welch.
Yeah. Briefly, I, I agree with the spirit of Commissioner Maddox's motion. I just don't like the formality of it. I get that we're trying to be brief. And listen, I'm, I'm a school teacher. I can take a roll for three hours, okay? I can bloviate on and on, but I can tell you that in this environment, I will, I will try to be brief. I mean, I, I really do want to be brief. I just don't like the formality of limiting an elected official's time, even if it's temporary. And I think we just all need to be judicious with our time and be self-conscious about it. And that's, that's why I would not support the motion. It's not anything against the spirit of the motion. I completely 100% agree with it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Seeing no other speakers, we wrap this up and we'll, we'll call it for a vote. I'm torn by this. Normally, I would, I would, I support the idea of all of us saying whatever we want to say as long as we want to say it. We don't get often the chance for us to sit together and talk about these issues. But I'm going to support this motion for two reasons. Number one, we are during a pandemic and the CDC recommends we do not spend an inordinate amount of time in a closed room such as this. And the other reason is we will be able to extend the time. And I, I think that we will be able to do that when, you know, I think we'll be able to get what we need to get done during this pandemic with that time limit. And I, I agree with Commissioner Maddox. It's, it's not, we will not make it a laborious thing. Need more time, any objection, go right ahead. I think that type of thing, while we're in this chamber, wearing these masks with these dividers, I think makes sense. So I, I plan on supporting the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Just a quick point of order, just for clarification, there'll be two new commissioners you may not know. If there's a vote taken during commissioner time for it to pass, it has to be unanimous. It's not a majority vote. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So under the board's policy, when we're in commissioner time in that part of the meeting, if a motion and a second is made, it has to pass unanimously or it doesn't pass. It's not just a simple majority. Just wanted you to know.
Thank you, ma'am. During this items for discussion part of our agenda. So with that, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay. The motion fails. Thank you very much. Commissioner Maddox, anything further?
I'd ask for an extended item to come back reflecting the thought that I just have for each commissioner to be limited to three minutes. But given the ability to ask for an extension of those three minutes, that's my motion, if there's not any more time.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those, all those. Yes. Yes. All those in favor of the motion as stated by Commissioner Maddox, say aye. Aye. Any all those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Anything else, sir?
Let's be back in chambers. No.
Point of order.
Yes, Madam County Attorney. Oh, that has to be unanimous, too.
Well, actually, no, that, that is incorrect. That is to place an item on the agenda, that's an exception under the board policy.
Okay.
That's, that's a majority vote.
Okay. Perfect. Great. Thank you.
It is good to be back in chambers. It's good to see everybody. I did, I do wish that we were under different circumstances. One thing I do like, whether, I mean, whether people believe it or not, is the intercourse that we have, the intercourse that we have when we're discussing items. I like to flesh them out, but at the same time, given the fact that we're in a pandemic, it's just, it's just tough. It's tough. I ask people that are out there that, to wear their mask. Actually, to respect what we're asking and do ask those business owners to try to enforce as much as they can that masks be worn. We are still in the middle of a pandemic. Just because people are going back to work, just because our kids are going back to school, cases are going up every single day. And so we have to show respect to that. We have to do things in a different way and hope that in time, either with a vaccine or, or with lower numbers, they were, they were able to get back to life as we knew it before the pandemic, if at all. So I do ask for that. I wanted to give a quick shout out to my fraternity brothers on Mega Society Fraternity Incorporated. My boss list is actually Commissioner Dozier's neighbor. We turn 109 years old today as a fraternity. Very glad, that's why I wore my bowtie. I was kind of disappointed we didn't take pictures today, but very proud to be a part of their organization and the work that we're doing throughout this community as well as the United States of America and worldwide. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You did a heck of a job tonight. Sitting in that chair is very different, but you did a heck of a job and I look forward to your leadership throughout this year. Congratulations to our vice chair as well, to our two new commissioners. Welcome. We are a family here and as you see, even, even when we disagree on things, when it's all over, we can still smile at each other, ask about our families and still be friends because we leave it right here on the dais. So I appreciate you guys being on this commission, taking the time to run for office and, and actually having the humility to do so as well. We appreciate your families as well. This is a family decision that you made. It's not just going to be you. A lot of times, it's going to be your family. So when you're in the paper, your family's going to read it. They're going to, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, so they'll be serving right along with you. If you ever need anything from me as a colleague, let me know. Any questions you may have, let me know and I'm here. With respect to, to that, as long as we're honoring sunshine, so it can't be on issues, but if it's, if it's just mundane, things like, you know, how to answer the phone, we're here to help you. And again, like I said, we have built quite a family here in Leon County. Got a great staff, but you also have a great commission. And we, we do a good job working together and being a team. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm going to start with, I, I mentioned this earlier, something related to the parliamentary procedures and other things. And then I'll get to the, to the welcome comments. So I, I have been thinking about this a lot and Commissioner Maddox said, whether you just referenced the three minutes or not, you, you have raised a few issues in recent meetings about our policies that we have not always followed. It's, it is the chair's discretion and we, we have a lot of deference to the chair every year, but we, we also have gotten in a habit of following the previous chair. So I don't think any of us have enforced a three-minute rule or other things like that in our ten years. So, Madam County Attorney, first meeting on the dais. It is good to see you, even if we're masked and behind plexi glass. I mean, every meeting that you've attended and has been virtual, you and your team have done a fantastic job navigating so many issues in recent months. One of the things we've put on your plate has been, going back to April and May, parliamentary procedures and a lot of these different issues. So Commissioner Maddox, you actually inspired this. And I would have talked to both county administrator and county attorney about this. I'd like to make a motion to do a workshop on our rules and procedures. Make sure we all understand it, but also reflect on any of those procedures that are on, in, on the books that we should be using, that we all agree with or maybe we disagree with. Times have changed and they need to come off the list. So we're not in this position that you have rightly pointed out that we have procedures that we're not following. So I think that, is that sufficient, Madam Attorney, based on what we talked about? Or do you need more detail in the motion? No? Okay. Good. So my motion would be to have a workshop to look at our board procedures, including those that have been referenced, but everything else that we've got on the list and allow our county attorney's office and staff to really dig deep and bring us any creative ideas you might have.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.[1786.58] Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? Alls in favor, say aye. Aye? Alls opposed? Motion carries. Pardon me? Okay, so that means that-
Opposition to the workshop?
Yes.
So that makes four to two.
Four to two, one point to the motion on the floor. Quite frankly, I don't, I think if we're going to have a conversation about just what those procedures are, I believe that's something that the county attorney could sit with each of us and explain to us, just like she sent out the memo, I think there's absolutely nothing wrong with the procedures that we have in place. They were placed there for a reason, and they work. So if we're having a workshop, we're talking about, to talk about changing them, I don't see anything wrong with them. But, so that's why, that's why I'm voting in opposition to it. Just for example, the idea of the three minutes, the reason I know I didn't ask, I didn't make a motion to that effect before today is because it's Robert's Rules of Order, but it's not our policy. Therefore, the chair has discretion on that. The chair does not have discretion on whether or not a motion is placed at the front of an agenda item versus after conversation, because that is exclusive in our policy, correct, Madam Attorney?
Madam County Attorney?
That's correct.
All right. So though we have not done it that way in the past, we've been wrong. And if you know the policy, if you looked it up, you know the policy, then you should try to abide by it. And now we know it, so we should abide by it. So I don't see anything wrong with the policies that we have in place, and so that's why I voted against us having a workshop. If we were more so talking about the county attorney sitting with each of us, explaining to us what that means, what these policies are, then I can be more in line with that. And us actually trying to adhere to those policies, I could be more in line with that. But today is the first time that I could say that we came close to trying to adhere to the policies that we have in place as a board. So we haven't even given them an opportunity to work. Even the idea of us, the three minutes and asking for extension, we hadn't even given that an opportunity to work. So that's why my vote was in opposition, but I look forward to a workshop and having a conversation.
Okay. It passed, though?
It did pass, four to two.
Good. All right, well, I appreciate those thoughts. Not to belabor this point, but just to explain a little bit more of what was driving me here, and I'm glad it passed, and I appreciate that support. I thought it was important to bring this up with our new colleagues, because there has been so much debate about this. And personally, for the example you just used, the idea of making a motion before we have discussion will more than likely, and this ain't, no disrespect, Ms. County Administrator or Madam Attorney, your options are normally the ones we go with. But the quick motion is normally staff recommendation. And that could be great, but it invites a substitute motion if there is even a little nuance, and it's, it's just not how we've conducted business for 10 years. So I think just being able to have some time to talk about that, instead of just assuming it's been on the books and therefore it should be the case, that's it. So again, I look forward to that discussion, I think the workshop is appropriate. Okay, I have one other motion, getting back on track here. Vice President Research at FSU, Gary Ostrander, is about to retire. Prior to the pandemic, they were going to have an event this week, and that has been canceled, but I'd like to request a proclamation, thank you, Mr. Ostrander, Vice President Ostrander, for his service, many of your-
I'll second that.
Thank you. To be given at the December meeting or at FSU if we can't bring Mr. Ostrander into the chambers. Mr. County Administrator, is that sufficient? Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and take the vote, Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor of proclamation, recognizing the good work of Dr. Gary Ostrander, say aye. Alls opposed? The motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. The only other comment I was going to make about Gary was just to mention the Innovation Park grant, the $10 million grant that we received from the Economic Development Administration. Things are moving forward quickly, and without OEV or FSU, we would never have qualified for those dollars that are going to help so many entrepreneurs in our community, and probably recruiting businesses as well. So he's been a good community partner, and we'll focus on that aspect, Mr. Chair. The last comments I have here are to, one, say, at this time last year, I had my dancing shoes on, literally on the dais of for Legal Services of North Florida. And if you don't know, our chairman has signed up to be a dancer this year, and unfortunately, it's the night of blueprint meeting, so I'm not sure we're all going to be able to see you dance, but this is an exceptional effort to take on, having been there myself, and I would encourage the rest of you to think about whether or not you'll sign up next year. It is a remarkable event for a very good cause, and, Mr. Chair, I am sure you're going to do a great job. I look forward to seeing it in video or in person.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Also, the date's been changed to February 25th.
Oh, well, that's even better. Okay, well then, beyond-
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks.
That's good. Well then, just to conclude this, it is quite remarkably back in chambers, and our staff appreciate everyone very, very much. Commissioner Jackson, you had the easier year. Congratulations on your reelection. You have had, only, reelection was easier, I should have said that. You have had an incredible year, and I appreciate your leadership. It's the first time we're seeing each other in person, obviously, but representing the schools, taking care of your community, and serving on the commission, you have covered all bases exceptionally well and with dignity, and it was good to see your beautiful family here, so congratulations. Commissioner Cummings, I gotta say, for you, you ran a great campaign. Congratulations on an exceptional win, and I think it's important to recognize that you are the eighth woman ever elected to this county commission, and only the second African-American woman to ever be elected. We can celebrate that, but we still have a long way to go. And I am, I am glad that we had two women, we had multiple women in your base, but we had two women coming into the general, and that was significant to me, that we were going to be represented, that I wasn't going to be sitting up here alone. I like these guys, but, you know, it's, no, it's good to have that diversity that we all talk about and we all celebrate. So welcome, and I think it will be very significant to all of our community to have you sitting up here with us. Thank you. And to Commissioner Welch, you're looking at two people who both ran against incumbents, both good men, like Commissioner Deloge, who we say goodbye to tonight. It's politics, it happens, and you ran a good race. It was remarkable number of issues, your family was out there, and I really congratulate you on the effort. It is, it's hard to come in when it's been so contentious like that, and not to say other races aren't contentious, but to run against incumbent is something different. And I do honor the service of your predecessor, but I welcome you to the dais, and congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I would like to bring to the attention of a few people left in the room, but hopefully thousands of people out there in viewing land. Over 12,000 young girls will be diagnosed with breast cancer under the age of 40 over the next year in the United States. Normally, that breast cancer is more aggressive, because it is part of the muscular mass, and it is more difficult to detect. And normally, 90% of the time, it's detected through self-examination, so I would encourage that amongst our young people. I'm blessed by opportunities, is what I like to think when we talk about a difficult year and beginning things. And just so you know, kind of the way that other organizations are doing, or our organization is doing, we have yet to meet face to face in a faculty meeting in a school setting. So there is calls for concern, Commissioner Maddox, and I hear you loud and clear. To the new commissioners, I would say the same thing. Congratulations, Commissioner Cummings, a great campaign, and unbeknownst to you folks, Commissioner Welch, you also feel a difficult field demographic, that's as the second ball-headed man to join us on the county commission. But I do, I want to congratulate both of you on a well-run campaigns, and that is the hardest work that I think I've ever done, but it's also awfully rewarding to be able to sit here and represent folks from within your district, or even in your case, countywide. Commissioner Cummings, so congratulations to you. Madam Attorney, the action on Lake Talcón is long overdue, and I'm excited about that as well. I think you're, probably 13 or 14 was when we really started noticing the levels, and as a regular user and swimmer and fisher in Lake Talcón, I could not ask for a more appropriate action, and I look forward to us being a part of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Awesome job, great transition, and we've kept you busy and on your toes tonight, but great job, and it's exciting to have you as our new chair. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Commissioner Cummings?
Mr. Chairperson, thank you for the opportunity, and of course, just being installed tonight, of course, I have no issues, no commission issues to bring, but I'd just like to say briefly, I really appreciate the congratulatory sentiments from my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Dozier, and all of you all. You really embraced us tonight, and I really appreciate that. And I also would like to thank Mr. Chairperson, Commissioner Minner, for agreeing to be one of our Dancing with the Stars contestants with Legal Services of North Florida.
You should wait until you see me dance before you-
Wait till I see you dance. And I've been on the board for Legal Services of North Florida for over 25 years. That was my first job after I graduated from law school with Legal Services of North Florida. So that's a great fundraiser that we've been doing the last, the last few years, so. But I certainly have benefited from the meeting tonight. I look forward to being more engaged, more involved on behalf of the citizens of Leon County, and I certainly appreciate the vote of confidence and support that the citizens gave me in electing me to this position. And I promise you that I am a hard worker, I don't talk a whole lot, but I certainly internalize a lot. I will be prepared for the meetings. I felt as though I was prepared tonight, but just trying to sit back and just see procedurally how the commission is run. And I've certainly learned a lot. I want to thank the county attorney as well for the briefing documents that I received from her, and I just think overall staff does a great job. From the over 1,000 pages that I reviewed for tonight's meeting, I think staff does a great job in preparing the commissioners for the issues that we have to address. So thank you all so much, and I certainly welcome my fellow new commissioner here, Commissioner Welch, and I just feel like that we will be an asset to the commission, and it's all for the good of the citizens of Leon County, so thank all of you all.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Commissioner Welch?
Well, thank you all so much. You know, I know it's not easy. It's not easy to beat an incumbent like Commissioner Deloge, and it's certainly not going to be easy to fill his shoes, you know, in this chamber, and I acknowledge and realize that. And I want to say thank you to the staff, to Vince, and Chastity, and Alan, and everybody has shown me tremendous grace throughout this. Again, I recognize that it's a bit of a family, and I'm kind of busting in the door, and I appreciate the grace and the courtesy and all the assistance that you guys have given me in the past two weeks, been a very busy two weeks. And I think Commissioner Cummings probably shares this sentiment, that we, as new commissioners, we want to do a great job, and we're eager to do well, and it's a lot of information, and a lot of moving parts at the beginning, and so thank you all so much for your support. To my fellow commissioners, thank you for your grace and your acceptance of myself, and in light of the circumstances. Again, you know, elections are tough, as Commissioner Jackson noted, and, you know, but politics aside, now we sit in the chair, and the real burden of service is sitting on our shoulders, and I take that very seriously, and I mean, it is a tremendous honor, it's really a life honor. Not many people get this honor, and I certainly appreciate that and recognize the importance of that, and just want to do my best. So I too am learning the procedures, and I promise you, again, I will be brief. I wear a mask for seven hours a day in a school, and I don't like it any more than you guys do, and Commissioner Jackson knows exactly what I'm talking about. So, again, I think, I also want to say that I think it's important to acknowledge that we have two educators on this, on this panel. You know, school teachers play a vital role in our society, and they oftentimes are very underappreciated, underpaid, and certainly right now, in light of this pandemic, I want to say thank you to all the teachers out there. This has been a very difficult year for classroom teachers, myself included. Probably the most challenging two weeks of my professional life leading up to school beginning this year. And so, and then throw into that running for political office, which really made my life interesting. But, you know, we're coming out the other side of it. The school board's doing a great job, I think the county commission is doing a great job, and I appreciate all you folks. And to my classmate, Commissioner Cummings, I could not have asked for a more lovely companion to come onto this board, and certainly look forward to a fruitful tenure for the citizens of our county with Commissioner Cummings. So thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Okay, to wrap things up, I just, I want to thank you all again for your support and the trust that you've placed in me as the chair for the next year. You know, I meant what I said earlier, which was that it's, a big part of my focus over this next year will be to help each of you be successful in your districts and within your, and throughout the county. And so when it comes to upcoming committees, media requests, you know, for things that are in your districts, I want to try to make sure that you all have the opportunities to do those things. I want us to make sure that in the eyes of Leon County residents, we're a team, and that's what I really want to focus on over the next year. You know, I also want to, I didn't say this earlier today, but I definitely want to make sure I do this now. I want to thank Jody Wilkoff, our chief of staff for the District III office. And, you know, our district office staff is limited to two people, and she's the chief, so I don't know where, what that means I am, but Jody does much, much more than keep track of our calendar and respond to emails from constituents. She and I talk a lot about policy issues and about compliance and things that we should be doing, things that we want to do, and so I just, I want to thank Jody for all of her support and work with me as a partner of these last two years. She makes me look good, and I just want to thank you in front of everybody, Jody. Thank you very much. I also want to, you know, this whole thing here, doing this in this seat here, you all know, it's a lot harder than it looks. It's driving a car and trying to drive a boat at the same time. And so I know there are a couple of times where I, the order of when we speak to the folks that haven't been here in this chair before is actually quite important. If you're the first one to request to speak, you can sometimes frame the debate on an agenda item, and so it's important. It's not just arbitrary. And so people, you know, strategically, we want to talk at right times at different agenda items. So Commissioner Dozier, I want to apologize to you, because upon reflection, I definitely skipped over you in one case, and Commissioner Maddox, I did it for you a few agenda items later. So this is, this is harder than I thought. I will get the hang of it, but I just, I want to let you all know that I'll be, I'm improving. You know, we talked a lot about Commissioners Deloge and Commissioner Lindley, two people I will, I will really miss. One thing that I just want to make sure we recognize as well was Debbie Craig and Chris Lkleena, the aides for Mary Ann and Brian. Those two do a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes, a lot of it the public doesn't see, but I just want to make sure that we give our thanks to them, because they, they are true public servants, just as much as their commissioners were. I want to congratulate Commissioner Jackson for his tough reelection fight. I know you had, I mean, it was, it was rough, but you pulled it out. I just, I was pushing for you, I was pulling you. for you. I was pulling. And he didn't have the opposition. He ran unopposed. So, just wanted to also welcome our two new commissioners. It wasn't that long ago that I was in your seat, Commissioner Welch. I was literally in your seat. It's a fire hose. It really is. And, but you'll get on top of it really quickly. I know you two well. Not only do you have an excellent county staff that can help you, but you also have us. And as Commissioner Maddox said, we can't talk about the issues that we're going to vote on, we can help you in any other way. So, you have a small army to help each of you get up to speed, and you'll do it. You'll do it. And you're going to love it here. With that, my remarks are done. Is there a motion to adjourn? There a second? All opposed? All in favor? All right. Thank you all very much. This meeting is concluded.